Cultivation and processing of medical marijuana will be allowed in the city of Cincinnati. City Council said yesterday for area zone for manufacturing, not residential. This is just a first step. The state of Ohio has final stay on who gets the 24 grow licenses statewide and where they go. So tonight, we are asking, do you support the legislation of legalization of marijuana for medical purposes? Cast your vote by going to local12.com/connecttovote.
And the early vote is heavy in the yes. Not a pretty day outside, huh?
Oh, so many in a row.
So good.
But...
You always hit a stretch. I mean, you have a stretch that you know can't last, but can we ask it to last, Erica?
You can ask as much as you want, but I can't control how long it stays around. We've been in the 70s for the last four days. Today, we should make it up to 80. Some of you are already there. We have a big matchup this evening, and the weather will cooperate. Temperatures are going to be falling through the 70s during game time against the Chicago Fire. We'll be in those lower 70s by the end of the game. Plenty of sunshine. We have those high clouds out there now. I expect some of those to linger throughout your evening, but we're right around 80 degrees in Hamilton, Cincinnati, just shy of 80, 80 in Batavia, mid 70s for Wilmington. And the dew points, while they're about six degrees higher than they were yesterday at this time, we're still in that comfortable range. Yes, it's warmer, but at least it's not that humid. Well, that's going to change over the next couple of days, and the higher heat and the higher humidity return for tomorrow afternoon. High pressure keeps us dry tonight, but you could see, we were under a northerly breeze yesterday. Now those winds have changed from a southerly wind, and that's helping to heat us up around 80. We'll be warmer tomorrow. So we'll talk about that humidity returning to the tri-state rain chances as well, because we get a little unsettled, and your weekend outlook is coming up in 10 minutes. Guys, back to you.
All right, Erica.
Thanks.
Look forward to it.
We have not sat together for over a month.
How about that?
That never happens, because you were out field anchoring the Tennessee trial, and you did a great job, by the way.
I appreciate that. And you were great in Italy, right?
I had a good time. We have a couple pictures. I didn't want to show anything until you got back, but we were in a rural area of Tuscany for most of it. Look at the little villa where we stayed. Isn't that darling? Very untouched, little place called Monciano, kind of off the beaten track, little city streets like that. And the cool part was that it was just so untouched. And then, real sad, though, around the monuments in Florence and in Rome, this is what you see everywhere now. I mean, it's the state of the world.
Everywhere.
You really do. And we stayed, and in Rome, we were near the American Embassy, and that's what you see. You see it around all the monuments. And, you know, it just kind of shocks you into reality that that's where we are right now. You're eating gelato, and I'm walking by that.
But you had perfect weather the whole three weeks.
We had perfect weather, perfect bonding with friends and family, and great food, and it was just a really special time. And you had a special time.
Just yesterday in New York, just getting back from New York with the Gracie Awards for our documentary Play for 22 for Lauryn Hill. So, the second year that we've been invited back, the piece that we did the year before, and then this documentary was honored. And goodness gracious, there's Eric Gerhardt and I up on stage. Dylan Dreyer of NBC's Today Show was hosting the event, and she was such a sweetheart. And then, I, of course, needled my way in at lunch to sit with Jane Pauli for a minute and chat with Jane Pauli, who's just such a hero. You know, when you get around the greatest storytellers ever, ever, you know, you're so starstruck by the people that were in that room. And it was such a cool, cool thing to be able to be there. And, you know, Dylan is, she's like a miniature. She's just teeny little, she's like you.
Really?
Teeny, teeny little thing. But it was great. The weather was great. We got to Colbert, saw Colbert shows taping on Monday night, Michael Keaton in that show. So it was great. Very thankful to Local 12 to be able to send us out there. Very thankful to Brent and Lisa Hill for continuing to let us in their life and continuing to spread the word about Cure Starts Now and raising awareness and money for that. So it was, it was a neat experience in New York as well.
Congratulations. And Eric is our photographer, Eric Gerhardt.
Absolutely. Nice to be back with you.
Yeah.
Sorry for ruining your moments there. We'll move on to the news here in a moment. Improving the fleet, what Cincinnati leaders did to help police officers better serve the public.
And the emergency at an Ohio factory that sent workers to the hospital.
And one more reason it is important for teen girls to eat fresh fruits and vegetables, because it could save their lives.
Before new police vehicles are hitting Cincinnati streets, they are Ford interceptors, SUVs, and many are already in use. They will use less gas, require less maintenance, and will need fewer repairs. That should save taxpayer money and be better for the environment. Five new street sweepers and four dump trucks were also bought, and that means every city street will be swept monthly.
A bad chemical reaction net. A manufacturing plant near Dayton sends more than a dozen people to the hospital. Firefighters were called to all service plastic molding just after midnight. Two chemicals mixed that caused some toxic fumes. Crews on the scene say when they arrived, workers were already evacuating the building.
We also found victims of what appeared with complaining of respiratory type irritation, eyes, and some headaches.
It's not clear which chemicals mixed causing the problems, but crews say that everyone should recover fine. There's a warning today for the parents of teen girls.
Health anchor Liz Bonus shares a new alert on what could lower a young girl's future risk for breast cancer.
It is that time of year where those summer fruits and vegetables are simply delicious, and they are everywhere. If you have a teenage girl, however, it may be even more important for them to be eating these. We stopped by Madison's at Finley Market today to tell you a little bit more about this research. It is published in Cancer Epidemiology: Biomarkers and Prevention. Researchers specifically looked at the diets of teenage girls, and then later in life, when they looked at 45,000 female nurses, they found 3% develop breast cancer over 20 years. Those in the top fifth bracket for inflammatory food consumption as teenagers had a 35% greater risk of developing breast cancer before menopause. Now, what causes inflammation quite often are a number of things, but we do know that it's diet-related. And the more you can get of these fresh fruits and vegetables and fewer processed foods, that's been found to have the best diet-related kind of impact on the body to reduce inflammation. The goal, of course, every day is to strive for five, but there's some thought that we may need five to nine, and at least three different colors every day to reduce inflammation in the body. If you have a teenager, it could be more important than ever before. That is our health alert. At Madison's at Finley Market, Liz Bonus, Local 12 News.
Could you get nine servings?
No way.
That's a lot.
I'm not close to five, I don't think.
That's a lot. I don't think I am either. New developments in a brutal attack on tourists in the French Quarter.
And Bible study, the new law that makes learning about the Bible an option in public classrooms.
And we're a bit warmer today, but humidity has stayed away so far. When the heat and sticky weather return, that's coming up after the break in about
All four people wanted in the brutal robbery of two New Orleans tourists are in jail. The victims are from Boston. They were attacked from behind as they walked in the French Quarter. They were in town for a religious convention. The man who fell face-first on the ground is in critical condition. The other man has been released from the hospital. One of the suspects surrendered to the police yesterday. The other three have since been arrested.
Bible courses will be taught in Kentucky public schools. Governor Matt Bevin signed a bill allowing school boards the option of developing a Bible literacy class as part of their social studies curriculum. The course would not be required. The ACLU will be watching the law and how it's implemented very closely.
You want to make sure that teachers can teach and make sure that they don't go into preach.
We're careful with the curriculum itself. There won't be any constitutional issues, and we'll do that.
Governor Bevin says the law should not even be controversial, because there is a lot of wisdom in the Bible. The law goes into effect on Friday. Friday, the weather's going to change.
Well, so we hang with Wednesday for right now, right, Erica?
Yeah, that's right. We're living day by day here in the tri-state. We are going to continue to see a gorgeous evening. Humidity hasn't really peaked yet. We get that tomorrow and Friday and into the weekend. And with that comes the unsettled weather. So we gather in a little bit of moisture. We already have some of that in the form of high clouds, but no rain is going to drop out of these clouds here. These aren't rainmaker clouds. We're just shy of 80 in College Hill as we look westward. And these clouds, you can barely see them on satellite, but you can see them coming in from the west, moving off of some activity that's well to our west. And it's not necessarily this system that you see here with all of this moisture. It's going to be another area of low pressure down to the southwest of there that will continue to develop and bring us some moisture come Thursday into Friday. We get into this little bit of a moisture trap, which is called the warm sector. So that's what we'll be in for Thursday and Friday. So we have little chances for rain Thursday and Friday. But this area of high pressure that was to the west and northwest of us yesterday, now to the east, will slowly move off to the east, but it does keep us dry for tonight. And we're fairly comfortable, even though temperatures are a bit warmer than they were yesterday at this time. Air quality, though, if you are an allergy sufferer, if you're sensitive to bad air quality, air quality is moderate. It's not terrible. Pollen has been low, but the mold has been rising over the last few days. So I've been able to feel that. Still in the moderate stage, but it's been climbing over the last couple of days at least. Tonight's forecast remains rain-free. If you're headed out to Party on the Purple, if you're headed out to the Reds or the FC Cincinnati game, absolutely gorgeous. Temperatures fall through the 70s. We'll be in those upper 70s still by 8 o'clock, lower 70s by 11. So we'll take you through future forecasts over the next couple of days. Here's what happens. Those two areas of low pressure that I showed you on satellite and radar continue to evolve and move eastward. So we stay dry tonight. We're dry for your morning commute on Thursday. We start off a little bit warmer, so no more 50s and upper 40s at night. We're going to see milder evenings, too, and that means a muggier morning, not so much for Thursday, but definitely getting into the end of your work week for Friday and also for the weekend. We'll start to see lows only in the 60s and close to 70s. So it's going to be warm overnight, too. By 5 o'clock Thursday, we're looking at the chance for a few stray showers. Definitely a lot of you going to stay dry. This is about a 20% chance. So a few of us will get under a few showers, and we'll see a little bit better chance getting into Thursday night, perhaps, in that warm sector. So we have a lot of moisture kicking in from the south, those southerly breezes bringing in a lot of clouds. So we'll see a lot more cloud cover for Friday as well. Same story with the same air mass, but we gather in a little bit more moisture. We actually have a marginal risk for our northwestern corner of the viewing area on Friday as well. So we may see a potent storm or two. It doesn't look likely, but there's a slight chance of that. I know that this model looks pretty wet on Friday, but this light blue indicates very light rain. So we are going to see the chance for some heavy rainmakers. I don't think it's going to be very widespread on Friday at all, but I think it's going to be slightly higher than Thursday, and then Friday chances are going to be higher than, or, excuse me, Saturday chances are going to be higher than Friday. So they increase into the weekend. There's your marginal risk in green for Friday. Again, that's the lowest risk for severe weather. So we may have a potent storm bringing us some gusty winds Friday into the afternoon or early evening. Tomorrow's forecast, though, looks pretty good. Other than a stray shower late in the day, I think a lot of us stay dry. We'll be around 64 at 7, around 80 by noon, and we're in those mid to upper 80s by the afternoon. Your weekend planner, humidity is going to stick around for both Saturday and Sunday. We're looking at the lower 80s, with Saturday being wetter than Sunday, but still not a washout. Monday, we're looking at isolated chances, and then unfortunately, the 4th of July looks a little bit wet. So you may want to plan for a Plan B if you have outdoor plans for the 4th of July. Guys, back to you.
Yeah, there may be some weekend 4th of July parties, I think.
There you go. Preserving a local landmark, the group that will help restore a piece of history next.
And our pets are having some people problems, and some of those issues should shorten their lives. What you can do to help your pet, that's just ahead. ...by historic tax credit. $5 million was awarded at Union Terminal from the Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program. The National Historic Landmark having a foundation work done. It is having the roof restored, new windows installed there, the electrical, heating, and cooling systems all being upgraded. And that's just some of the work that's needed to fix up that old building. The terminal was built back in 1929, and 1933 was a key rail station until 1973. It's been home to the Cincinnati Museum Center since 1990.
Pets are getting more pudgier. A new study shows obesity in America has now spread to include obesity in the pet population. One in three pets is overweight or obese. And while porky pets may look really cute, the extra fat can cause life-threatening conditions. Don Daler is at a dog park in New York City with the warning signs for pet owners.
Busy lifestyles and unhealthy diets are wreaking havoc on our pets.
Overweight and obesity in our cats and dogs has increased by 160 to 170%.
Dr. Kirk Berninger is the lead veterinary researcher behind a study by Banfield Pet Hospital.
Right now, one out of three cats and dogs are overweight.
He attributes this increase to a number of factors: lack of exercise, too much food, and a changing attitude towards our pets.
We are starting to consider pets more and more to be members of our family, and we'd like to communicate with them and show our affection to them by offering them treats. And it can be pretty easy for us to offer too many treats in a single day to our pets.
That's a problem, because just as in humans, lugging around all that extra weight can be hazardous to your pet's health.
For example, heart disease and respiratory disease are something that we'll see. Type 2 diabetes is something that we'll see with cats that are obese, and we can see other diseases that are linked with dogs being overweight.
So how do you know if your pet needs the treadmill treatment? After all, animals, especially dogs, come in all different shapes and sizes. Dr. Berninger says you can use this as a general guide. Looking at your pet from above, he says you should see a distinct tuck at your dog or cat's waist, and from the side, you should be able to easily feel, but not see, its
Dr. Berninger tells us that there are a lot of little things you can do that will help your animals. Take them for longer walks or to dog parks, and cut down on the number of treats you give them. Don Daler, CBS News, New York.
If your pet is too heavy, there is something you can do about it. There are daycare facilities for pets opening in many places where they can run trails, swim, or just play, work off some of that fat. And I've told you before, we inherited a heavy dog from a relative, and it was so easy. I mean, because they don't eat anything you don't give them. It's not like your own diet.
And I was telling you, we haven't changed the diet of ours. She's gained 25 pounds, so now we're dealing with potential disease and worry about that.
Yeah, that's not from overfeeding.
Not good, not good. Coming up in our next half hour, at least 12 Republican senators now have concerns about the health care bill, what President Trump is saying. That's coming up next. And tense talk after calls for calm, where things stand with the Republican political rhetoric.
They might look like ordinary melons, but there is a new list of super summer fruits and vegetables. I'm Liz Bonus, and it is a list you don't want to miss for good health. We'll have details and try for you just ahead.
From the Weather Authority, this is Local 12 News.
Welcome back to First at Four. I'm Paula Todi.
And I'm Brad Johansson. Senate Republicans now regrouping after they failed to agree on a health care plan to repeal and replace Obamacare.
Their leader curbed a vote after it became clear there was no way the bill would pass. As Weijia Jiang reports from Capitol Hill, finding a path to passage won't be easy.
Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell is negotiating behind closed doors, trying to gain support for his party's health care bill.
We know that we cannot afford to delay on this issue.
But a delay is exactly what McConnell called for when he postponed a vote on the GOP plan to repeal and replace Obamacare. A dozen Republican senators are opposed to the bill in its current form.
Republicans are working on revising the bill for the rest of the week, so they can review a new version during the July 4 recess. They'll come back here to Capitol Hill the following week, which is the earliest a vote could happen.
After calling an emergency meeting Tuesday, President Trump acknowledged reaching a consensus could be tough. This morning, he seemed more confident.
So we have a plan that if we get it approved, it's very tough. Every state is different.
Democrats say they could make the difference.
We believe we can fix the Affordable Care Act and make it more affordable for people across the United States if we do it on a bipartisan basis.
I have said all along that I thought we should talk to the Democrats from the beginning.
Because with zero Democratic votes, it would only take three Republican noes for the bill to fail. Weijia Jiang, CBS News, Capitol Hill.
Senate Minority Leader Chuck Schumer is also calling on President Trump to meet with Republicans and Democrats on the Senate bill.
A showdown over Medicaid expansion could take place in Columbus. A vote is expected on the budget, and it includes a freeze on Medicaid expansion enrollment next year. That can result in a veto from Governor Kasich. The governor's office says that freezing Medicaid enrollment could mean that as many as 500,000 low-income adults will lose health insurance coverage. The governor must sign the budget by midnight on Friday. Food and Drug Administration wants to get more generic medicines on the market faster. It is one way to make prescriptions, I should say, a little bit more affordable. The FDA says that it will make reviewing new medicines a priority until they are at least three of them on the market. That's the level at which prices tend to drop sharply, up to 85% of the brand-name price.
Less than 24 hours after being installed, this is what is left of a Ten Commandments monument at the Arkansas State Capitol. Police say 32-year-old Michael Tate Reed intentionally drove his car into the structure. He has been arrested and charged. The total cost was around $26,000 in private donations. The monument has been the center of controversy for the past two years, after lawmakers approved a measure to have it placed on state grounds. It's been two weeks to the day since a man filled with political anger opened fire on politicians and colleagues playing baseball just outside of Washington, DC. There were resounding calls for calm afterward, both for voters and elected officials. So where do we stand today? Chief Political Correspondent Scott Thumann has the update.
So this is what you should be doing. Not fighting amongst yourselves, but fighting against the communists.
To call the political climate tense these days would be an understatement. Despite pleas for unity after the shooting at a congressional baseball practice, violence is still voiced by celebrities.
When was the last time an actor assassinated a president?
Cited in reporting.
Comparing President Trump supporters to Nazis, calling for them to be stabbed.
And one could argue a carryover from the campaign trail.
I'd like to punch him in the face, I'll tell you.
This is a culture that has been created for a really long time, and the change of culture is going to take more than just, more than just two weeks.
Unfortunately, the tragic events a few weeks ago were a reminder that we need to do everything that we can to bring down that political blood pressure.
We have seen consequences for people's roles in the rhetoric from a Nebraska Democrat who was fired for saying that he had wished Congressman Steve Scalise had died in that shooting, to Republican Congressman Greg Gianforte, who was charged with assault and sentenced to community service after body slamming a reporter during the campaign.
And I want to do everything in my power to bring civility back to the conversation.
And just this week, Sarah Palin sued The New York Times after an editorial portrayed a link between her and the shooting of Congresswoman Gabrielle Giffords. But it's not all doom and gloom. In fact...
You know, I've actually found the atmosphere here on the hills has been much better. Bad things are going to happen in a country of 320 million people, but overall, I think most people are recognizing this as an opportunity to heal.
In Washington, I'm Scott Thumann.
The Department of Homeland Security is set to announce new security for international flights bound to the United States. Industry and U.S. officials briefed on the announcement, said that airports and airlines around the world will be required to implement those measures, and if they don't, their passengers may be barred from carrying laptops and other large electronics in passenger cabins. Such a laptop ban has been in place at 10 airports in the Middle East and in Africa. The new policy could lead to those bans being lifted.
All right, we're talking about enjoying it now and maybe rearranging plans over the weekend.
Take it while you can get it, because it's pretty good getting right now, isn't it, Erica?
It is. We don't usually see these types of days at the end of June, and we should be seeing temperatures in the mid 80s. We're not even into the mid 70s, or, excuse me, not even into those mid 80s yet. But we hit the mid 70s yesterday. We're in the upper 70s now for Cincinnati, lower 80s for Hamilton and Middletown. We're still in those mid 70s for Wilmington. But Batavia, you've hit 80 degrees this afternoon. So it's warmer, but it's not even that much more humid. We're seeing dew points in those mid 50s, about five, six degrees up from yesterday, so not that big of a change. But that area of high pressure that was off to our north and west yesterday, now pushing slowly off to our east. So that has tapped us into some southerly winds. That's what's helped to keep us up closer to that 80-degree mark. But again, should be seeing those mid 80s. So we're almost there for some good pool weather, but it should have been okay this afternoon. If you're headed out this evening, perfect weather. Not too hot, not too humid. Temperatures will be falling through the 70s for the Reds game. First pitch is at 7:10, so we should be in those mid to upper 70s around Cincinnati by then. Coming up in about 10 minutes in my full forecast, we're going to talk about when the higher heat and higher humidity return. We have several rain chances, but I'll tell you when you won't need to worry about that rain, as well as your weekend outlook and your 4th of July outlook coming up in my full forecast. Back to you.
Sounds good. We'll check back, Erica. Thank you. Some of the tastiest foods for good health may not even be on your summer shopping list.
But health anchor Liz Bonus is here, and she went food shopping for the best summer superfoods today. I see a bag over there. She joins us now with a few that make the list. Liz?
Oh, one of my favorites. Hi, Paula. Hi, Brad. As food researchers learn more about the nutrients in food, especially the ones that are good for you, they discover that some of the best are those that are combined with other fruits or vegetables. We stopped out at Madison's at Finley Market today for some of the best show and taste, you might say, for good health.
It is the perfect season for summer food shopping, especially if you know what you like.
Strawberries and apples.
I like kiwi and zucchini.
My favorite is probably watermelon and strawberries.
Well, those are all great, good-for-you foods. A few of the newest superfruits you might not even know you like yet. A few of the best, according to those such as Jerry, who stock them daily so they are fresh. Orangettis, spaghetti squash that's orange inside. White peaches, heirloom tomatoes that are homegrown. And don't forget about sugar babies. They are basically no-seeded round watermelons.
Said they're the best because...
They're the sweetest.
Canary melons are also sweet, and so are these new crenshaws, a cross between honeydew melons and cantaloupe. You can just cut them open, scoop out the seeds, and they are ready to eat. So part of what makes these superfruits is they have super good nutrition, they generally have a super good taste, and they're only available certain times of the year. Right now, it tends to be the summer months. And that may be because sort of the way the seasons go, it also gives us what our body needs for protection against all kinds of things in the sun and the air. Let's try it. Oh my goodness, it's like candy. While there's nothing wrong with your traditional favorites...
Mangoes, strawberries, watermelon, and corn.
I like apples, mangoes, and strawberries.
You might find a new tradition. Try it. You might like it, any way you slice it. Now Paula's already freaking out at me. So she says, I had two people today say, I don't like melons.
I don't like melons.
I like melons.
No, this is the truth. If you don't like melons, I made Patty try this. She said she didn't like melons. I made two other people who said they don't like melons. Remember I said to you, it tastes like candy? This is the crenshaw, a cross between a honeydew and a cantaloupe, and it is far sweeter.
It is sweet.
Yes, a lot lighter.
It is sweeter.
Yeah, not as heavy.
That's why I don't like melon. It's not sweeter, and it just kind of...
Right. And it seems heavy. That's lighter. Isn't it good?
Called a crenshaw?
Crenshaw, yes. And it's about, it was at Madison's, it was about $2, $2.50 for a melon. As they get in season a little bit more, you'll see them in the supermarkets at maybe, you know, a little over a dollar, but they're just about $2 each.
Big thumbs up.
They were, I got four, I got double of these from just one melon. They were, I got four, I got double of these from just one melon. So you could definitely, like, you got a couple of kids that'll go at it. They will love these.
You know, and I have to say something about the price of fruit because it is expensive, and I go, I love blueberries, and I hesitate. And then I think, I would pay $5 for a dessert. Why won't I pay it for something healthy?
Oh, I would think you'd pay $4 for your Starbucks, and you wouldn't pay that for two melons.
And I had to reframe it and then just say, you know, I am worth it.
You are so worth it. And remember that when they combine the fruits and vegetables, they combine the nutrients. And that's why you need a variety of foods. And some of these, if you really don't like things, please try. All right? Crenshaw. All right. Okay, we're back at 5:30 with new research on a virus going around hitting young teenagers. Thanks.
All right. Well, up next, the 30,000 visitors to Times Square that were hauled away to another location.
And kids in sports, meet a little girl, and hear why soccer has a very special meaning to her.
Youth Sports of the Americas.
In our partnership with Youth Sports of the Americas, today we meet a second grader from Oregon who tells us why she loves to play sports. It's Your Winning Way. For eight-year-old Miley Johansson, playing soccer has a special, deep meaning to her.
I mostly just have fun and just, I get to grow up like my sister.
It was her older sister who encouraged her to play, and now that inspiration has her working hard to improve every day.
Yeah, we work on some skills and a lot of other things that are really fun.
She also plays basketball and softball and learned from her dad and mom the purpose of sports.
You're having fun while getting fit. So it's really cool because it's two things combined.
Soccer, though, is her favorite. She's only been playing for a few years and already has a special memory.
I kicked the ball, and then my other teammate kicks the ball, and we both hit each other's heads with the same ball. It was fun.
She says sports in general make her happy, a young athlete whose path is already off to a good start. For more information, just log on to youthsportsoftheamericas.org.
Well, look at this. About 30,000 honeybees are found swarmed on a ledge in Times Square. A beekeeper was called in to suck them up and then move them to a hive in a nearby park. The beekeeper says it is a common misconception that honeybees sting like wasps or hornets. He said they're actually pretty docile and gentle and a huge part of our life.
I was walking right through there yesterday. It looks like a paperclip, but a slap of price on this, $185, add the name Prada, and it becomes a money paperclip. Yeah, Barneys is now selling sterling silver paperclip-shaped money clips from Prada. $185 bucks, equivalent to buying more than 13,000 regular paperclips from Office Depot. And if they're making them, you know what that means. Someone's going to buy them.
I actually thought on vacation that a money clip would have been kind of a cool thing because you open your wallet and stuff's coming out, but not at that price. No, no, no. Kami Durking joins us next with a look at today's developing stories.
And putting on a show and how art and light are brightening an international skyline.
Sonic Buildings is putting on a show now. The Sydney Opera House will display indigenous art as the sun sets each evening in a light show lasting about seven minutes. These projections will become a staple of Sydney's skyline every night. Wow.
Nice.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Paula, Kami and I moonlighted together at 10 o'clock while you were...
Yeah, we did. While we were gone. This is the first time.
We all haven't been in the studio here for a while.
But no one can replace Paula Tovey, ever.
Kami checks in now with some of our developing stories.
All right, guys, as you know, you've been talking about this, drugs are just taking lives at an alarming rate. In Butler County, more people are dying from drug overdoses than any other cause, and the sinister mix of heroin and fentanyl is making things even more dangerous. Ahead at 5:30, Larry Davis tells us why police are also concerned deadly doses of fentanyl could soon turn up in other drugs, for instance, marijuana. And then Sam DeBose's family has been critical of the judge who presided over the Ray Tenzing retrial. That trial ended the same way as the first one, with a deadlock jury. Anjanette Levy spoke with two local attorneys today about the rulings that Judge Leslie Giz made during the trial. She will have that report for you at 5:30. Also, thousands of Ohio's most vulnerable residents and hundreds of millions of your tax dollars, that is in the mix in a lawsuit about where severely disabled individuals should have the chance to live. Coming up at 6, Jeff Hirsch will talk to those who are backing that suit and those who think it's unfair. Again, his story is coming up at 6 o'clock. I will be back with Rob Braun at 5.
All right, Kami, we'll see you then. Thank you very much. And now we check in with Erica on a beautiful, beautiful day.
Hey, Erica.
And we've seen a super stretch of nice weather. I mean, for late June, when you have temperatures in the 70s for four days straight, five now, and also dew points that are in that 50-degree range, this is great. And, you know, we get these every so often, but we're pretty lucky to get these comfortable days this late in June. We're at 79 in Cincinnati. Some of you have hit 80, 81 this afternoon. That high pressure is slowly moving off to our east, going to keep us dry for tonight. This evening is looking so good. But we have winds now out of that southerly direction. So yesterday, we had a northerly, northwesterly breeze that kept us a little bit cool. It was turning chilly late last night, but we have a southerly breeze now that has heated us up to about 80 degrees across the board. Off to our west is a couple areas of low pressure. These are the systems that bring us the rain, bring us the unsettled weather. And you're going to see this development of some shower and storm activity that will most likely turn severe. We have some tornado watches out for portions of Iowa. Now, this will look pretty menacing later on this afternoon or evening, but it's going to shift to the east and kind of die out. So we really don't get into that moisture. It's this area of low pressure, which is still west of Wichita, that will continue to move eastward and kind of develop over the next coming days, and that's what brings us that unsettled weather and eventually the cold front that comes through this weekend. If you're headed out to the Bridge, Party on the Purple, Glear's Ghetto will be there. Temperatures will be around 80 degrees in those upper 70s. By 5, we'll be in those upper 70s, still through about 6, 7 o'clock, and then falling into those mid to lower 70s by 9, 10 o'clock. So this goes until 10 tonight. That's going to be a perfect night to hit up the Purple People Bridge, and they have a ton of good food and good drinks there. Wednesday this evening, going to look pretty nice. Thursday morning, though, we start off dry. We'll have more clouds move in, but I still expect to see partly cloudy skies throughout the day. Now, this is the newest model run, which is looking a little bit wetter, but really, it's still going to be some stray or isolated showers and thunderstorms for tomorrow afternoon. I'm thinking chances move in after 3 or 4 o'clock, and you could see that here at 4 o'clock. We'll keep that chance in throughout the evening. So very isolated showers and some thunderstorms possible for Thursday evening. Again, a lot of you do stay dry, though. Friday, we'll see the chance for some showers and a few thunderstorms as well. Coverage is a little bit higher that day. I know this looks widespread, but this very light blue is likely not a whole lot of rain. So we're looking at probably isolated to scattered, kind of in-between there for the coverage for Saturday. And then, or, excuse me, for Friday. And then Saturday, the coverage goes up. So from Thursday, Friday to Saturday, that coverage is going up, and then it kind of hits a wall into Sunday, and Sunday's looking drier. So tomorrow's forecast looks fairly dry, although we do have a stray chance for an isolated shower or thunderstorm later in the day. We start off around 64, so no more 50s or upper 40s at night. We'll be around 81 at noon, 87 for a high. And then on Friday night, we're looking at that chance for some showers and even a few thunderstorms. If you're headed out to the Cincinnati Art Museum for Art After Dark, temperatures will be falling through the 80s and into the 70s. So tomorrow, we're looking at 87. Few showers and thunderstorms possible Thursday and Friday. Highs in those mid 80s. We'll be in the lower 80s for Saturday with scattered showers and thunderstorms, so coverage is up on Saturday. And some of the models we're hinting at just kind of the first part of the day, so the first half of the day through about 2 or 3 p.m. will be the wettest. But Sunday, we're looking at isolated chances. Same for Monday, and then unfortunately, the 4th of July is looking a bit wet. So you're definitely going to have to have a Plan B for the 4th of July. Brad and Paula, back to you.
Erica, thank you. Kids making money.
The Program One family started to help kids get real business experience.
This. Now the kids are out of school. They may be looking to make money.
One City is taking the idea a step further with a new youth vendor permit. Maria Shakowsky tells us it is for kids really serious about business.
Nick Raffi is a 12-year-old who didn't want to spend the summer asking his parents for money.
I decided to make some money instead of asking Mom and Dad and saying, Mom, Dad, can I please have some money, buy this? So just for extra spending money.
His brothers, 13-year-old Mac and 9-year-old Joseph, join him as he rides his bike around town selling ice cream.
I was like, hey, I got a bike. Why don't I go biking around with them?
The family was instrumental in introducing the new youth vendor permit in Wausau, which for $15 allows entrepreneurs under 18 years old to run their own business. Pat Peckham is a city council alderperson and says the new permit offers a learning opportunity.
They're needing to deal with the public and be responsible and have all that, you know, learning experience is now more open to them.
While Big Nick's Ice Cream is a young business, only a couple months old, Nick is a savvy business owner and knows that a good strategy means good profits.
Get key customers, and then you find out a time that it's good for them, and then you come back around and keep exploring out farther.
The brothers hope their business inspires other young entrepreneurs in the area and helps to get kids out during summer break.
It's going to bring kids out of the house, playing video games. It's going to inspire them to do better stuff.
That's a good start in the life. Kids can begin registering for the youth vendor permits beginning July 18.
And now here are Rob and Kami with a look at Local 12 News Live at 5. As UC prepares for thousands of soccer fans, protesters prepare to take action over the mistrial of former UC Officer Ray Tenzing on a very big stage.
And with Cincinnati turning blue and orange, Megan Mongello is live as fans prepare for FC Cincinnati to take on an MLS team.
A two-year-old racks up more than $231,000 in medical bills, and his mom takes to social media why her post is gaining national attention. This is Local 12 News Live at 5.
Breaking news alerts and the hour-by-hour forecast from the Weather Authority. This is Local 12 News.
It's our goal that everyone is going to come here tonight for whatever their purpose is and be able to enable their rights, do what they need to do, and go on about their business.
UC says it's ready for thousands of soccer fans and the protesters who plan to be on campus as well. Good evening, everybody. It's a big night at UC. FC Cincinnati is playing the Chicago Fire on national television. Thousands of fans will likely encounter at least dozens of protesters calling for a third trial of former UC Officer Ray Tenzing.
Local 12's Deb Dixon is outside Nippert Stadium where the protesters are expected to gather. She joins us live now. Hi, Deb.
Hi, Kami. This is one of the signs protesters will be carrying here at UC in about an hour. This is a state university. All this area is public property, so they have every right to be here.
This is what happens at FC Cincinnati games at Nippert Stadium. Thousands of passionate fans show up. The largest was 30,000 at the June match against the Columbus Crew. Tonight could be a record-breaking attendance as Cincinnati looks to score its second straight upset of a major league soccer team. Chicago Fire is one of the best in North America. It's an opportunity for protesters to have signs seen by thousands. Only a few protesters showed up outside the courthouse during this last Ray Tenzing murder trial for the shooting of Sam DeBose. Like the first trial, the jury could not agree on a verdict. Tonight, protesters will call for a third trial.
This is a state university. This is public space. So if someone wants to walk through here, stand here, take action on their First Amendment rights and say what they think, hold signs, et cetera, that's all perfectly permissible.
What's not permissible is obstructing fans walking or driving. Not permissible. Running onto the soccer field in front of cameras. There are rumors protesters will try this.
Of course, we have alternative plans for any time that someone might get on the field or someone might engage in some other misbehavior, but I'm not anticipating that occurring.
Sam DeBose's family says it's grateful for the Countdown to Conviction Coalition, which includes several groups, including Cincinnati NAACP.
I say, thank you. I say, I love them people. They are righteous people. They are standing up for righteousness. They have the courage. I'm proud of them.
Audrey DeBose also asks for peaceful protest, saying Sam DeBose was a peaceful man.
It's interesting that this is back here. You see, the whole Tenzing story has sort of moved away from the university where he was a police officer at the time when he shot Sam DeBose. Even some national media refer to Tenzing as a Cincinnati officer. Then the trial is on Main Street. The indictment comes out of Hamilton County, and all the protests have been down there until now, and it's back here, Kami, where the whole thing started.
And Deb, will the protesters, have you heard, will they pretty much stay in one area there, or are they going to spread out all around Nippert, or do you know?
They are supposed to be in this area right here, which is by CCM. You can see there's, there's, I see one person right now next to the signs. This is where they are supposed to be. Now, if they start, they start getting in the way of cars, if they start getting in the way of people trying to get to the game, then the game changes. There are, right now, more cops milling around than there are protesters. But, you know, so far in Cincinnati, these protests have been very peaceful, and everyone believes that will continue tonight, Kami.
Yeah, let's hope for more of the same. Deb Dixon, thank you.
Well, it's no coincidence that the protest is happening at UC. The group is hoping to be visible to a crowd of more than 30,000 people and a national television audience. Local 12's Megan Mongello is live with FC fans who are gearing up for the match. Megan?
Well, hey, Rob, we are at Mecklenburg Gardens. We have joined the party of the largest fan-based support group here in Cincinnati for FC Cincinnati. Michael's going to tell you the name because it's in German, and I've mispronounced it one too many times.
It's Deenstadt.
Which means?
The inner city in German.
All right. The inner city in German is the name of their support group, and they are so excited because tonight is a huge matchup with Chicago Fire, and these fans only have one thing on their minds, and that's soccer.
Blue and orange merchandise was flying off the shelf at the FC Cincinnati shop downtown.
I'm at the store to buy a hat. I do have a shirt already, but just, you know, it being hot in the summer, you know, I'm just for more stuff to wear to the games.
Amber will be one of the fans of what's already being dubbed a record-breaking crowd. Back on June 14, when the Columbus Crew was in town, Nippert Stadium held 30,000 fans. The front office says more tickets have already been sold, and for the first time, the entire upper deck will be open.
It's been open partially for games this year for the Columbus Crew match. All tarps, all banners will be down, so general admission overflow will be accessible in the upper deck. And honestly, any ticket in the stadium will have access to sit there for overflow purposes.
Cheers and chants will also be coming from another crowd in UC tonight. The Black Lives Matter protest is happening at the same time. That doesn't bother FC Cincinnati's biggest support group.
We've got a group of about 500 different members. Everyone's got different opinions and different thoughts. They've got a right to protest. They've got a right to assemble to be there. We respect that. I'm sure that they respect us and what we're doing. Live and let live. Everyone's got a different thing they're involved in tonight, and we don't expect any issues or any problems.
Family-friendly is what FC Cincinnati prides itself on, and the youngest fans are also pumped for the match.
How are you going to cheer when they score?
I'm just going to stand up and yell for them.
Do you want to demonstrate?
Yeah.
No, I made it better.
She'll bring a lot of energy to the game tonight. Now, there are still general admission overflow tickets. That means if you buy one at the stadium, you're going to probably sit in the upper deck. And the fans around me right here are season ticket holders, and you guys are in the Bailey.
Right, yeah.
And that atmosphere is supposed to be electric.
Oh, absolutely.
You're going to hold your excitement till 8 o'clock, though, right?
Trying to.
All right. Can we get a little cheer now, or chants?
Ozzy, Ozzy, Ozzy!
All right, Rob. We're having fun. We'll send it back to you.
There's your enthusiasm. Thanks very much. The match starts at 8, and from the action on the field to the protest outside, Local 12 will have it covered for you tonight on, at 10 o'clock on Star 64 and on Local 12 Live at 11.
Oi, oi, oi. I like it. The city of Cincinnati is taking steps to acquire the vacant King Records Building and nearby land. City Council today okayed using eminent domain, asking a court to force the owner to sell if the city and the owner cannot negotiate a price. King Records was a pioneering studio in country music, R&B, and rock and roll from the mid '40s through the early '70s. The city hopes to turn the location into a tourist destination with a new recording studio and museum.
Well, this is day five of our adjustment to having less Brent Spence Bridge to drive during the afternoon rush. One of the major choke points has been getting out of downtown. Liberty and Redding, Fifth Street, Third Street, Second Street, all have had major backups as we all try to figure easier ways to get home at this time of day. That's Fifth Street right there. Doesn't look too bad at the moment, does it?
Not at all.
And since a lot of people who commute to and from Northern Kentucky could probably use a break, Tank sees a marketing opportunity. It's offering free rides on all buses on all routes tomorrow. If you need to know where to catch a bus and when, the number to call is 331-TANK.
Well, as John Gumm will tell you, we have him to thank for another beautiful day.
It was beautiful, but the chance of rain seems to be increasing. Here's John with no wait weather.
Yeah, credit for this. I'll take the blame for the rain. It's going to be increasing later on this week. Tonight, we're looking good, though. Back toward the bend in the river, as our tower cam is giving us a view tonight. We have some high, thin clouds overhead. 79 degrees at the International Airport, warmer today, and you can thank a south breeze now blowing at 10. FC Cincinnati, not the only game going on tonight. The Reds also playing against the Brewers. If you're headed out there, temperatures in the upper 70s, falling into the low 70s with mainly clear skies expected for tonight. But rain chances increasing and building heat and humidity. I'm back in about 11 minutes with more.
John, thanks very much. Our Local 12 poll today is asking, do you support the legalization of marijuana for medicinal purposes? Go to local12.com/Connect to vote. We'll have final numbers for you tonight at 6.
Despite being convicted for his coworker's murder, he has always maintained his innocence. Just ahead, David Dooley's wife shares her opinion for the first time.
And breaking all 10 commandments at the same time, only hours after the installation of a controversial monument, a disgruntled driver takes matters into his own hands.
Was back in court this morning for the first time since his murder conviction was thrown out.
But he did not find out when he will go back on trial for the 2012 death of Michelle Mockbee. The Mockbee and Dooley families were in the courtroom. So was Local 12's Joe Webb.
More than five years since the death of Michelle Mockbee, the judicial system in Boone County is still taking small strides toward justice.
David Wayne Dooley.
Only three words from accused killer David Dooley, but three more than spoken in today's hearing by Boone County Commonwealth's Attorney Linda Tally Smith. She was in court for other cases, but the Dooley case is now in the hands of Assistant Kentucky Attorney General John Heck. It was the prosecution's handling of video evidence in Dooley's first trial that prompted Judge J.R. Schrand to throw out Dooley's 2014 conviction and order a new trial. Dooley's family is holding out hope.
Because he's innocent. I've known this all along. You know, I lost faith in the justice system because obviously you are guilty before proven innocent, but I feel confident because he's innocent.
David Dooley and Michelle Mockbee were coworkers at Thermo Fisher Scientific in Florence. She was found beaten to death in the plant on May 29, 2012. Two and a half years later, Dooley was convicted of murdering and tampering with evidence. He has repeatedly proclaimed his innocence. Little was decided at today's hearing except to meet again in August. Mockbee's family said nothing as they left, but privately expect a second conviction. Dooley's wife disagrees, but has empathy for Mockbee's family.
There's no way to bring back Michelle, but we can help Michelle by proving Dave's innocence. So maybe Kentucky will go and look deeper into this and find the true person that did this to her.
Now, the judge met with attorneys privately at the bench for most of today's hearing, so we really don't know what was discussed. The state had hoped to get a trial date today, but they will be back in court August 3, and set a date for David Dooley's
but they will be back in court August 3, and set a date for David Dooley's trial number two at that time. Kami?
All right, Joe, thank you. Well, you hear a lot about it with teenage girls, but they're not the only ones at risk.
At 5:30, a warning for parents and the virus doctors say is on the rise in young men. More than $231,000 in medical bills just ahead as the health care debate rages on. Why one mom's post on social media is going viral.
Health Care Bill intended to repeal and replace Obamacare is in trouble tonight on Capitol Hill, but it isn't dead.
Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell has postponed a vote until sometime after the 4th of July recess, and he has his work cut out for him, changing the minds of some of his Republican